I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with every team of justly sworn.
Now we'll have a personal reflection sort of in silence.
We're going to bring up the agenda for adoption, but there's one change. We're removing from the agenda the presentations of the Superfunds Making a Difference Award, Debbie McDowell, or City Elementary, and we'll have that at a future time. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the change?
It's moved that we approve the agenda with the presentation being tabled till next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mrs. Count, to adopt the agenda with the change made. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Period. Next is Citizen Comment, and let me read this very long, a little strange. Yes, who am I? Thank you for asking. No, I always feel a little strange reading because it's such a forceful statement and I'm one of such pleasant caring people, but so excuse me, but I have to do it. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, or other egregious disrespect and refrain from words or statements which under usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults intended to incite violence or breach of peace. We ask that you model following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The School Board will not discuss or take any official action on any presentation. Any person's presence in which to speak must fill out a green card which are located in the back of the green on that table. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? No, that's the speaker. Okay, she's sorry.
I approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Dodd to approve the consent agenda. Now we'll have the recognition of donations and I would love, loved it, the donations. Yes, let's vote on it to approve the consent agenda.
Aye.
All in favor? Oppose? Zero? That's a five zero. And now the recognition of donation.
Approve the $500 donation to Crystal River Middle School from Neat Real Estate. Approve the $4,000 donation to Citrus High School from Coranas of Diverness. Approve the $3,000 donation to Citrus High School from the Coranas of Diverness. Approve the $500 donation to La Canto High School from Grand Living at Citrus Hills. Approve the donation of Amana Electric Range and Hot Point, Hot Point, sorry, that's one quicker, Hot Point Topload Washing Machine valued at $1,144.65 to La Canto High School from April Phillips. Approve the $1,000 donation to La Canto High School from West Florida Medical Association. Approve the $600 donation to La Canto High School from First Defense Security Enforcement. Approve the $6,770 donation to La Canto High School from Carrick Connor DOPA. Approve the $500 donation to La Canto High School from Advanced Urology Institute. Approve the $500 donation to Crest from Rotary Club of Crystal River. Approve the $750 donation to Witkoochi Technical College from the Villages Dollars for Scholars. Approve the $2,000 donation to Witkoochi Technical College from New Covenant United Methodist Church. Approve the $3,000 donation to Witkoochi Technical College from the Education Foundation of Osceola County. Approve the $1,000 donation to Witkoochi Technical College from the Honeysapset Civic Club. And approve the $2,000 donation to Witkoochi Technical College from First Presbyterian Church. For a total of $27,264.65.
That's great. Let's give a clap. Now, Mr. Vanessa, Chief Vincent, remind me if we've approved your, what you presented the last, when we were here last, or are some of the data approved?
That we still haven't approved yet.
Okay, we still have to put that.
All right.
And someone give a motion?
Are we, are we doing?
Yes, the instructional.
Item.
Goldenrod.
We have item six.
Oh, do you?
Mm-hmm. Oui. Yeah.
Well, let me, that's okay, then we'll just. Jumping ahead of myself, okay?
Good afternoon, I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Kennedy to approve the people listed on the Goldenrod. Do I have a vote on this? You ready to vote on it? Go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
We would like to announce that we are having a career fair on Wednesday, October 27th at Central Florida and, oh, and La Canto, I called it, Central Florida and La Canto. We are having the career fair from eight to noon and then from three to seven, but if we have a thousand people show up, we will be there all day until the last person leaves for the career fair. We're very excited about it. We will have all departments represented, transportation, maintenance, food service. All three of our elementary, middle, high schools will have representatives there. We will have laptops, computers, iPads there so that our applicants can apply and be hired right then be offered conditional contract to be hired. I would like to thank Lindsay Blair, she has been, if you have seen it on Facebook and reposted it, thank you, or on Twitter, she's posted on Facebook, Twitter. Chronicle has advertised it, we've advertised it anywhere and everywhere that we can. Bay News Nine has run its spot for us and advertised it, so we're very, very excited about our job here coming up. Again, we're going to offer positions, we have, as you know, we're always in search of bus drivers, bus aides, we'll have our bus out there, we have a brand new sign that we're going to promote, or it'll be the first time that everyone gets to see our sign on the bus, and we're very excited about this. So we hope to hire all of our, for all of our open positions. And I'd like to thank Nancy Weaver as well in our department, she has worked, she's been instrumental in just having the signs made and the banners made and advertising with Lindsay, so I really appreciate that. The other piece that I want to share today is we are doing an audit of job descriptions. So we will be bringing, over the next year, we will be bringing job descriptions forward. We're looking just closely, we're just seeing an example, under my job description had negotiations. So we are looking at those job descriptions and maybe changes is needed, some have not been revised in a while, so we're just going to, so if you see, we won't bring them all at once, but each month we'll bring a few, so as you see those changes come through, we'll notify the board of those changes and then end those changes in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzie, for, you do excellent job with the job descriptions, and it really makes a difference with our employees.
Ms. Wayne, I want to apologize for last week, about this time, Mr. Bonomo was pretty much inconsolable. I know when the Yankees lost to the amazing Boston Red Sox, he was, I understand his tears were pretty much, you know, drowning the cloth, you know, the carpets.
He was supposed to speak today, but he offered $100 to do this.
And I'm sure after the Red Sox won last night to go to the American League Championship, he was struggling as well, but we shouldn't bring it up. So thank you for having me not bring it up.
Thank you.
Oh, let me mention, on Friday, I went over to WTC, had an open house, and when I first got there, there were about 10 people in line, okay? And then I went in to get something to eat and came back and there were 100 people. I could not believe it, I thought, wow, you know, this is really great, these people are interested in studying, getting a job, so they're all doing a super job, a super job.
Thank you.
And now Chief Vincent, I was trying to put you ahead of other people, I don't know why, maybe it's because of that badge and stuff you wear.
I used to get in trouble for sitting in line, you know, so I didn't know what to do there for a second. Good afternoon, I know we had a closed session earlier for our annual review of our safety and security, you know, just a quick blurb on that, an overview, you know, this year we did our walking tours of every one of our schools in our district, and you guys got to see the results of that in our district recommendations. So that report is due to the Department of Education by November 1st, so after today's meeting, confidential recommendations that we discussed earlier, I'll submit that by the 1st of November, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the full safety school assessment tool recommendations with the small change that we made to that plan today.
Second. Do a second. Okay, it's, then moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by Mrs. Bryant to approve, and what do you call this?
MSSAT.
Oh, you always use the initials.
Four-School Assessment.
Okay. Four-School Assessment. With the changes we made today. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both are expected. Thanks.
Thanks again.
And then Chief Vincent, before you leave, I still want to remind you that on the student survey that comes back every year, and we're doing the student improvement plans on the consent authority, that the safest place that our children in Citrus County feel safe is in their classrooms. Thank you.
Good enough, thanks. And, wait, just one second if you would, too. Just for the sake of our public here, because it's our job at the school board to approve the recommendations of the full safety assessment tool. And that tool is not, it's a confidential tool because we don't want to show deficiencies or areas of, you know, specific concern that may cause more security risks, so we do that in closed session. However, the broad term of this, the scope of this plan is not out of the sunshine, and that is that we are taking steps to best protect students at school. And it starts with immediate response with school resource officers and guardians and a school safety specialist and Chief Vincent that is here to respond in case of any emergency or active assailant. And we have that in place, and we are one of the, one of the few districts that have a secondary, a backup position, a guardian, a trained, a trained guardian armed, ready to protect students in case of an active assailant. So many of our campuses have two school safety officers, armed individuals trained, ready to respond in case of an emergency.
Correct. Correct. So all of our secondary schools, as we discussed earlier, our middle and high schools have that additional layer of security with our school guardians. You know, I think our program is a model for others, you know, their school guardian program looks very different depending on what district you're on. Some are, some are uniformed, some are non-uniformed, but you know, I think we've been extremely fortunate to have that program here, and it does supplement our school monitors and officers in our schools tremendously. I constantly get praise about their activity in their schools. We have the full position that also visits elementary schools when one of my guardians is out from their campus, so again, just those added layers at the end of the day just makes our schools, like the example of safety and security.
And so these schools are like a cop's beat, a zone beat, this is where officers, we have officers at every one of our, our schools, school resource officers, sworn deputy sheriffs, hired, employed by the sheriff's office, funded in part by the school district and the county commission, which is a great team, that partnership is so important to keeping kids safe, but we have a secondary person available in the fact that we have guardians. And I just can't stress that enough, that that is a great program, and what has been done here with guardians and the way we've trained them, the way we have employed them, you know, and the fact that we're, we are putting a secondary person ready to respond in case of an active assailant is huge. And with a son in school, it means a lot to me to have that. And so I want to thank you. I also want to talk about Alyssa's Law. I mean, we've met that with a great device, and all of our teachers have this device where they can press a button and all, we all have it, all staff members, and immediate response, immediate connection to notify law enforcement in case of an emergency. And we've seen that used some now, too. Can you talk a little bit about that so that, I want people to understand the extent that we've gone to to protect students?
Sure, our compliance with Alyssa's Alert this year, you know, it was state mandated, but there was a lot of solutions out there, like we brought to the board earlier this year and decided on our crisis alert by Syntetix. And I can tell you, you know, we've had quite a few uses of that, more than several dozen local alerts with the badge, you know, everything from mostly medical, we had students with medical problems, the staff members have alerted us on their badge. The feedback that I get from the schools that have used it so far is, one, they're very impressed with the speed of that, as soon as that alert goes off on that badge, they're getting notifications whether it's on their phones, their computers, their iPads. And the precise location is like the key. Exactly where that dot on the map says that person is, is where that person is. So it's great comfort to me, and you know, without discussing, you know, the nuts and bolts of the system, those seconds if we ever have a critical incident are going to matter of where, and you know, as Vincent and Parkland, they knew there was a problem happening, but they didn't know where to go in those first few minutes, and this is, to me, is what changed that. Now, we're going to know where to go, the sheriff's office is going to know where to go, all of us people responding are going to know where to go. So it's kudos to our district, you know, for implementing something like that, they would have loved it beyond, not just being compliant, but choosing the best solution out there.
And then we have threat assessment teams, these are the things that we talked about in this report, we have threat assessment teams in place that responds to any threat deemed by the school district, and we have a team that addresses those threats and processes those threats and comes up with solutions to threats, to reduce the threats and to address threats. You know, we talked about our active assailant training in Alice, which we've had in place for two years now, I guess this is the third year, yeah? So this alert lockdown, the form counter evacuate, which we train all of our staff and students in, and we do these drills, and even though we've had COVID, we're still doing drills, and we're still meeting the law requirement for drills. And, you know, I think we're going above the law as far as our drills and what we're doing training wise with Alice, which is so important, so just for a minute, talk a little bit about that, if you would.
So our Alice drills, yeah, obviously it is a requirement by the state to have an active assailant drill as often as you have fire drills, so we have a minimum of 10 of those every school year. So, you know, when COVID was here, we did change our format, there was a lot of tabletop happening with that, but we're back to actually doing the movements with our Alice drills, evacuating students to certain areas, barricading, that's the option that teacher chooses. You know, we just, we just re-certified again, and September is an Alice certified district, that you have to have certain things in place, and that equates the number of drills that you're doing a year, having proof of that, showing that at least 75% of your employees have, are Alice certified, or, or, last I checked, I think it was 89% yesterday, which, you know, we'll be above 90 here in the next few days, I'm confident of that. So we're doing all of the right things when it comes to training our staff, letting our students know that they have options during critical incident, and we're just doing all the right things.
We've approved our reunification plans, and although, you know, there is some, there is some discussion in the report about reunification, but that's pretty much all in our policy, that's, you know, nothing to hide with that, but, you know, that was a big problem at Margersville Middle High School, is how do you get students back to their parents? How do you account for students? We have these reunification plans, and that's an ongoing process. I know we're continuing to work on that, with the sheriff's office, we're continuing to work on, on, on how we are able to get students back, but we have all these things in place, we've identified all these things, so I, you know, that's important for parents to know that. And then we talk a lot about physical security, things that are recommended, of course, there's an expense to all of these things, and we have to prioritize those expenses, which we do, and, you know, we don't get into specifics about physical security, but we have made a lot of improvements, especially in the entrance areas of our students, and we're still working on some of those. So that's always good to know. Our video cameras, our systems for video, for having areas covered with video cameras, we continue to expand those things. And, you know, it comes down to those partnerships, too. We talked about the walking tours, right, with getting other emergency first responders in and keeping them involved with our campuses, and that is so important, we have these partnerships with all of our first responders. We know that Nature Coast EMS is now coming on that ambulance service, EMS is now under fire rescue, I know you've been working to make sure, you know, nothing is forgotten or left behind in that transition, and we have a lot of confidence in the fire departments. Matter of fact, they're on the walking tours with you, correct?
They are, all of our first responder agencies this summer, you know, at the time, Nature Coast EMS, the county fire department, the city fire departments where that was at, and all the way down to our co-compliance, the sheriff's office, all of those were there. And I can tell you, that was, it was a great experience for me, because as many times I've been to a lot of these schools, there's areas that I saw that I didn't know existed, you know, closet areas that had been converted or changed over the years and where we access things, so everybody had that feedback to, you know, a long, long time friend of mine, Lieutenant Farmer, he, you know, he spent most of his career in the school system, he's like, I didn't know that was there. So it's a great partnership of those agencies to get in there and say, in times of emergency, we need to know where those things are, so.
Yeah, and when we look at the big picture of the Canton School Complex, Ms. Bryant, and the fact that we have another emergency exit, we already get, that's already totally completed that process.
Number years in a day.
And so those are all big things that we've done as a school board, and this board has been very committed to those moves.
Miss, you just reminded me, some, I think a year or two ago, we donated a school bus to the ambulance service, and they have triaged it to the car, the people, the fire department came, EMS came, and the sheriff's department came, and we want to make sure that that stays with our country.
Well, I know, I talked to Chief Stephen a few weeks ago, and I know that the asset transfer was a big project ongoing, so I know all of those assets were turned over to counties.
It applies that we'll give you another bus. Because in the La Canto complex, what's the one that precipitated the call for the bus?
I really appreciate Mr. Dodd lifting all that up, because a lot of times, we vote on an item, and people don't necessarily get to see the work behind the scenes, the amount of the committees that we've been on, myself going with you down to, you know, to Hillsborough County to look at some of these systems and seeing how they're integrated. And Mr. Dodd, you did a great job talking about how they are all working in concert with one another. These are not just like individual siloed programs, and particularly the role that you have of orchestrating all of those concerts together, because when one button is pressed and a series of things take place, when you have multiple agencies, multiple from the guardians onto the SROs, how they've worked in concert with one another. By the way, that's an impressive thing to watch, how the SROs, and I know that they are, they are often law enforcement brothers, and there is certainly a brotherhood there, but those guardians and SROs seem to work so much in concert with one another. All of that is to the safety of our kids, and I'm grateful, because I know we obviously get to see the fuller picture behind the scenes, but grateful to everyone. Mr. Dodd, you mentioned, and I do think it's worth lifting up again, the Alice, the Alyssa Law, I know we say we're going above and beyond, but, you know, you might share, the system we have means that 100% of our staff members have that, and it is available for the safety of all. If that's not the case, in order just to meet the law, that's not always happening just because you've met the law.
I mean, you know, many school districts have not, or have required faculty and staff to put an app on their personal device, and there's a lot of resistance to that, there's a lot of questions, can they be forced to do this? And there's concern that why, you know, are they, is somebody tracking you, you know? And so by us having a separate item that someone can press that just stays here with your ID and a system for how that alerts law enforcement, and you got to realize that goes right to the 911 center. The purpose of it is to get emergency responders en route to where the emergency is, because seconds matter, like you said. I mean, seconds really do matter, and so, you know, we have that, it did cost the district more money, but I think we did the right thing for our faculty and staff and those school districts that, you know, their district may have provided a program, but they either have to download it on their personal device, or they got to carry around an iPad with them wherever they go, and it's not being done here, we're meeting 100% of the requirement of law.
And on that, you know, Mr. Bishop, he may not be in the room right now, but there, Mr. Bishop, I want to thank you, because I know when we looked at that, and cost becomes always a factor, you said, I can't tell you today how we're going to work through some of this, but we're going to make sure we have the right things for our students and staff, so thanks for your role in all of that.
Thank you.
And it's, it's very interesting, I sit here and I listen to you saying the same thing over and over, different words, because working together, cooperating, being a team. And Doug, I imagine that that happened, it's Donald Douglas that got a hold of it out there, that it was, but here, everyone is working together and doing what they do to protect our children, and that's the biggest and major concern of protecting children. We all are doing a great job. Thank you. Thank you.
We have an all-day group, I'm sorry, we did, okay, I just wanted to share myself.
We get that.
Thank you.
Ginger's keeps track.
Yes, I couldn't remember.
And you do too, I'm not, that's school calendar. Non-controversial.
Good afternoon, I'm just pulling up our presentation for you here on the computer. Saying I need to sign in.
As I made before, we adopt the calendar, everybody, all the teachers, for personal aid, they see what calendars are available, so it's not just Amy choosing, there's other people, all the people, it's just the chief.
Correct. So, again, good afternoon, I'm here just to present to you and get approved the calendar options that we're going to be putting out there for all of our staff and staff committees to vote on, and then I'll of course come back at the end of next month or the month after to share with you the winning calendar. But today, just, you're looking at the two calendar options that our district calendar committee met and created and basically approving them, or if your options are either to approve them or tweak them, if you want to make changes of them before we put them out to vote, or if you believe that we need to make further changes, we can then of course meet again as a district committee to do so. But first, just I wanted to share with you that we did have a great collective group here that met for our district calendar committee, Ms. Count serves on it, so she can attest to that, where we have every school pretty much represented. where we have every school pretty much represented on that committee, or at least the levels are represented, as well as each department, multiple departments and community members, levels, whether it be support, instructional, or administrative. We always have our teacher of the year and support person of the year also serve on that committee. They get into groups. And we also, before we get into the groups and create the calendars, we do talk about those pieces that help guide the creation of the calendars, those non-negotiable pieces that our statute says that we must, of course, follow, but also board recommendations. And we also hear from them. They are representatives of the county. And all teachers, if they've got input, administrators and support, as well as staff committees, all do contact those representatives with feedback and ideas and things that they want to see in the options as well, in our calendar options. So they present those before our groups actually start creating the calendars. So here's some of the feedback, the guiding feedback here. You can see on this slide. I don't really have it as, let me do it this way. From that. So, for example, the student start date. We know the statute states that it cannot be any earlier than August 10. And then our board here, you all recommended that you don't like it to be on a Friday. So if August 10 happens to fall on a Friday, your recommendation is for it not to start on that Friday. And we also heard from our staff and parents and community on that district committee. And we heard from specifically Transportation Department and a few other departments that they would rather start midweek, not starting on a Monday or a Tuesday. They'd rather start that midweek time. So basically, you see there on that chart, they're taking all of those kinds of things into consideration when making up these multiple calendars that committee is. We look at the student days. You can see there that we have requirement, of course, in black. We have to have that 900 hours. We also know that there's 135 hours per credit that must be implemented. The board, you can see in blue, stated that they really would prefer for that semester one to end before Christmas break. So we put that August 10 requirement and that ending before Christmas break, semester one requirement together. It really does create that, you know, that limiting piece. We're limited in how many days it is in that semester one and where we can put some professional development and days off and so forth when you only have a certain amount of time, of course, in that period. We looked at the teacher days, 196 teacher days and what the requirements were for that. You can see that we heard from staff, parents and community that they really were asking for more opportunities for professional development, whether they be full or half days. Of course, we prefer full days. However, I will say that one of the things that was brought up, and you can see it there, is that we have a major shortage of subs. And we heard it from Ms. Swain already. And so the more we can provide those opportunities in our calendar where subs are not required, the better. Which is why when you look at, you know, those, that full or half days, they want it throughout the year in fall, winter and spring, not just during the pre-planning time or after school is over. Definitely throughout the year was a, we heard that from all the different levels. More PD time, just period. We have so much on the teachers' plates, we know, and on administrators' plates in trying to get trainings done. We have new curriculum this year and next year. And with that comes extensive training that our teachers need. And to do that on their own time, of course, is not something that we want to have happen. They would like also more workdays, of course, designated during pre-planning. We know that they've got trainees that they have to do, but they want time designated, you know, that's coveted that they are allowed to be in their classrooms and working. So those were brought up, actually, a lot. That's probably the most we heard. Parent conference day was brought up as well. Days off in the blue there. We definitely heard from our board that Veterans Day is a non-negotiable present. We want everyone off. Also, the recommendation was to align the county fair and spring break. So you'll actually see that that is occurring on both of these options. Also, do not schedule half days or days off during those survey weeks. That is a big factor with funding and FTE in that October and February time. Do not schedule those half days because students tend to take a full day off when they have a half day off. So we definitely want to look at that as, or we did look at that as well. On the right there, you see, you know, some different requests. And some of them actually contradict each other. You'll see that there are some that say, oh, well, we want days off or half days on Mondays or Fridays. Then you would hear from one or two that, oh, we want it on Wednesdays really is the best. So you're going to, a lot of these, you're going to hear both sides of it. So that's again, why sometimes, like, you know, we want to look at those options that we provide so that we do meet those needs. There were additional days off requested by staff, parents and communities, such as Easter Monday. There was a request for day after Halloween. Super Bowl Monday was requested as well. And fall break, to have a fall break, kind of, you know, splitting up that time. So these are, of course, are all considerations. I must say that I do agree with the Super Bowl Monday one. Yeah, we had trouble even finding out what that actually, they were designated.
Oh, I'm sure if it came down to it, somebody would figure it out.
But also, also, spring break being separated from Easter was a request. And spring break having it be at the end of the third grading period. They like the idea of finishing off that grading period and then when you return, you know, can that be tied in there? So these are, again, considerations that we heard from the, from staff members, elementary, middle and high, and also, of course, our district departments. The final thing we heard was about last day of school. We know testing is going to be different that year. So we did take a lot of those requirements off the table with our committee. You know, before, we would look at all the testing windows and really try to refrain from having any kind of days off or, you know, PD during those times. However, this time, we took those all off and we just said, let's really look at the ending window. We know there's going to be a beginning, middle and end of the year progress monitoring window set up. However, we think there's going to be definitely more flexibility than there was in the past in when we administer and how we administer at the schools. So we do know that there will be something at the end of the year. And the state did already provide a testing window for that springtime, and it would end on May 26. So we did include that piece only, knowing that, you know, if testing is going to be ending on May 26, no matter how that testing looks. Because we still have AP testing, IB testing, those aren't going to be really touched. We also talk of EOCs possibly still being included. We don't know that. So we just looked at that saying, okay, well, if we know that testing is going to be, is going to end May 26, all right, let's think about that with students when they end school. So we did have that on the table, looking at that when we were scheduling the last day. You will see that recommendations or considerations from staff members. You know, some people said they wanted at least one day after students leave for a work day. There were some that say, we don't really even need that, just as long as we end before Memorial Day. There were some that say, I want to definitely end before June. Okay, so you'll see some of those comments there. So I just wanted you to really see this piece. So you could see that we not only, of course, take what the board's feedback is and what statute and our policy says, but we also gather a lot of feedback from staff, parents and community when trying to create these calendars. And also, of course, those people that are on the committee, their personal requests. But we definitely want to hear from all of those that report to them as well. So we took all of that feedback and we made two calendar options this year. As you can see, this slide here is just showing you in a, in more of a visual way of calendar option one and two. We did make a nice little kind of cheat sheet, if you will, differences and similarities between the calendar options. So on the left, you have calendar number one. On the right, you have calendar number two. At the very bottom are the similarities. So it's important to note that both calendars have the same start date for teachers and students. So that's why you don't see it up there. They both have Labor Day and Veterans Day off, the same whole week of Thanksgiving break. Martin Luther King, spring break and county fair are the same on both calendars. They both have Good Friday off. And they both have the last day for students being May 26. And of course, Memorial Day as well, May 29 off. Everything else on the top there, there's going to be where you're going to see the differences. In professional development, whether it's the number of full days or half days, you'll see teacher workday differences. Last day for teachers, you see there is a difference between the two. The placement of where the conference day is, they're both on a Friday and they're both in the first nine weeks. However, they are a week apart. You'll see the Christmas break, there is some variety there in differences. Additional days off. And then, of course, the bottom is the semester schedule, the number of instructional days in both of those. And you'll see that there is definitely a difference with that. So I ask for any questions, of course, comments. And our next step then, of course, would be approval from you for these two calendars as is or with revisions. And then we would move on to the next step where we have 30 calendar, or 30 calendar days for everyone to review and vote in our overall schools and departments.
I have no additional feedback, really. The only thing I, you know, my standard, when you break out the data, if maybe we can just see where the SACs, that we can just kind of have that as a separate thing so we get an idea maybe how they respond. And I know you normally do.
Right, we'll have that as a separate bar incorporated.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And the fair day, is that locked in and chosen the fair week?
Yes, we have that in there. It's spring break and county fair from March 27 to March 31 is already been set according to how that is their fair week.
And Amy, thank you. I know that you're always available for us to talk to you. And we had a little discussion. Appreciate you shedding light on some things for me. Of course, you know, I would kind of stand with my concern over the number of half days on calendar two. You know, I hear from parents a lot of times, Bishop on entry school, parents that it's tough having so many half days for them. And that calendar two does have 11 half days. I know this year, we have, what, seven half days, I believe. And I think two of them are each at the end of the semester. So that's, you take away four right there, and you have three others. But I was a little concerned. So I just want to kind of view go that with the board on why would there be so many half days? We have six on one. And maybe I could see a couple difference, like, you know, maybe eight on the other, but instead we have 11. So could you just kind of go over that? Because I want, you know, I feel for parents for the childcare issues that they have or may have as a result of the half days. And for my son who's in school still, I mean, half days, you know, not a lot of instruction gets done, it seemed like to me. So just kind of curious.
I will say that it really has to do with the amount of PD and workdays and what we have available. We know that a half day does count as an instructional day for students. We are trying to count that 180 of instructional days. So if you were to make it a full day off for whether it be workday or a PD day, students then would need to have an additional instructional day, a full instructional day to make that up. So by making it a half day, you are meeting that instructional day, 180 requirement for students, but you're also meeting whether it be a workday, a work hour needs or PD hour for staff by doing that half day approach. I know that there, I was going to look up the county today and I forgot to look that up. I know that there was just something in the paper over the weekend where they were saying that, you know, there is teachers having to work, you know, take on classes during their planning time because there's such a lack of subs. And so there are actually, there's a county that is adding half days to their current schedule, to their current calendar, because they want to compensate those teachers for that planning time that they are having to meet. So it's really because of our PD requirements, we have to have a minimum of 30 hours of PD. We have to have that, of course, work time for our teachers. And if you either have it as full days off, you're going to then need to add days to the calendar for instructional days, whether it be in semester one, especially in semester ones where we tend to have a problem or have more difficulty versus semester two because of that restraint with August 10 and Christmas break. In order to do that, half days is really one of the only options unless you're going to take full days off or to meet those needs. But then you're going to need to compensate those instructional days with full days for the students.
But then we count the half days as a full day for instruction.
That is correct. That's what I'm saying, that's where that compensation piece is, that it does count as a full 180 days for instruction.
Does assessments or, I should say, finals play any role into the half days at the high school level? Because I thought it did.
Correct. The two days at the end of each semester, so four of the half days are for those finals. The EOGs or the, you know, the finals, the last two days of in December and the two days in May.
And that seems to be pretty much a necessity, that you're going to have those half days no matter how you slice that.
Right. And so, and I know that we've also had in the past, and I believe it's in calendar two, the, your elementary and middle do, elementary, I know, has requested to have at least one half day at the end of each quarter, at least. Because they, you know, we do report cards, we all do report cards, but they tend to do more with comments and things like that at the end of those quarters. So that incorporating into that as well.
And I'm with you, Mr. Dodd. I hated them as parents. It always was frustrating. We, it's a continual comment that we hear from parents, especially in our SAC meetings and the grocery store and everywhere else. But I think that's why I'm always interested to say, okay, at the end of the day, when we vote, where does that come back? Because it's, they aren't the most ideal PD days either. Because they're often, as soon as the kids get out, they're trying to get the PD started with enough time to make it really worthwhile.
I would like to note that on calendar option number two, you'll notice two of the half days that are labeled on that differences and similarities chart are half workday, half PD day. So I do want to note that because there are two of them. One that occurs on May 30th and one that is on January 9th. And why that's important is, is that students aren't there for that full day. So it isn't going to be one of those issues that you were saying for elementary parents and so forth.
So that really, that cuts it from 11 to none.
Yes, that's, I'm just, as I was talking to you now, I just saw that.
No, okay, that's, yeah, yeah.
That would make a difference.
We didn't even catch that when we talked before.
Correct, I just saw it, yeah. So that would be a piece.
Yeah, that's a good catch. So that means, that means calendar two has nine half days total.
For students.
For students compared to six, nine and six, where we had seven this year. I just looked it up, we had seven. Okay, six, nine, okay, all right. And I would like to say this, you know, we revoted last year. I don't want to revote this year. I just say, this is one vote. If teachers don't want to vote, then that's their prerogative. You know, as long as we give them notification, hey, this is your voting window, you know, I hope they're going to vote. I do agree with Mr. Kenny, though. I like to see how the SAC committees vote on it. I really do. I, you know, it's kind of ironic that they only get one vote. But you know, I think there'd be a little bit more weight to the SAC committee. But I understand, it's, I think that's in statute, isn't it?
It is.
It is. But that's why when we see that, we can then apply kind of a...
Yeah, and it's the board's final decision. We're not just going to vote.
When you mention the two calendars, Mr. Dodd, I have to give Mrs. Kraut the caduce because we do hope we went through last year with three calendars.
Yeah.
And we just decided.
We're not going to do that under her guidance. Just two calendars is all we're going to need this year.
Well, that was my first question, Amy. I said, actually, you had three, then we had two, which is fine. And she explained that. And I know the committee, I mean, you guys have a lot of, a lot of...
Yeah, there was more, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
More questions?
So basically, you just, you just want us to prove to have these as the two options? This isn't the final calendar, it's going to go to the vote. What's the timeline on it again for the, when is all this going to take place?
They will, starting Monday on the 18th, these will all be going out. We will have that electronic vote. So there will be an email sent out to every staff member. And of course, our principals all are aware that the SAC vote must occur between, you know, from that Monday, the 18th till November. And they have scheduled their SAC committee to, of course, happen during those 30 days so that they can have that vote and turn that in. So I will be coming back to you on December 14th with the winning calendar for you to approve.
Move approval of the 2022-2023 school calendar options.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kenny. Second, I'm trying to approve the two options for calendars. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Here's five zero, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
This is next. There you go. One of your, it's not, it's not all of your stuff.
I'll try to be quick. So I'm handing out your updated ESR and stimulus funding sheets. So just to give you a little budget update, the financial audit is in full swing now. Of course, we just submitted the AFR and the budget and all that in September. So auditors were on it right away. And there haven't even, we haven't got the final report from the operational audit yet. We are in the middle of doing our responses to them for the operational and the FFP audit. Hopefully, we'll be bringing those to you within the next two board meetings so you can review those. And then I just want to let you know, the internal accounts audit, they are finally finalizing that right now. And the auditors did mention that they enjoy coming to Citrus County to do the internal accounts audit because we are so clean and we do such a good job. And I did relay that to the principals and assistant principals in their meeting. And I did relay that to the principals and assistant principals in their meetings this past month, that they really do, we're an exemplary district in the handling of our internal accounts funds. And I mean, I don't think we've seen any fraud in the internal accounts since I've been here. So I just want to say that's, kudos to our principals and our bookkeepers and to Ms. Lynette Smith, who oversees all the internal accounts in my department. So that audit will also be coming to you in the next few months. So on to our ESR funds. I just want to let you know that a report came down about mid-September, and there were of the ESR one funds. And at the top of this little chart I gave you, it does show that we had a little bit of ESR one funds left, and those, of course, were those cleaning and sanitation funds that the state drew back. There were 11 districts as of September, only 11 districts in the state that had spent all of their ESR one funds, and we were one of those districts that had spent our ESR one funds. So of the ESR two and the advanced lump sum, I don't know if you remember, a couple months ago, I let you know that they did release some of the advanced funds, but you had to spend them by September 1. Then they did extend that to September of 2023. But as of September 1st, 11 districts met, met the September 1st deadline and spent all of their money. We were not one of those. 16 districts spent over 60%. We were one of those. We were able to spend about 83% of our advanced lump sum. So, and then there were 12 districts left that got advanced monies that did not spend more than 60%. So as of September 1, the combined ESR one and ESR two, there were $3.8 billion issued in that statewide. As of September 1, 1.2 billion statewide had not been spent, which brings up the ARP funds, and that has been big news the last week or so. And in March, the president did release the ARP funds of approximately $7 billion to Florida for education. Two-thirds of that was available right away, and that is how the governor issued the bonuses to the teachers and the principals. So the state had to submit a plan for the remaining one-third, and they did post that to the U.S. Department of Education website on October 6th. So as of today, Citrus County School District and other school districts have not heard anything of when we will be getting ARP funds. And from what I understand, most of that's because there's 1.2 billion still sitting there of the ESR one and two that have not been spent. So just to give you a little recap on statewide, where that's standing. As soon as we know what the ARP funds are, of course, I will relay that to you, and we'll be getting to work right away. So...
Ms. Wilson, just as a question, so the awarded amounts, these would be the amounts that we would be the maximum, for lack of a better term, is that correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
Do we get to just, you know, pick a number, or how does that, how do those determinations?
The state determines how much we get. I know some of it was based on how Title I allocations are, are sent out, and they gave us, you know, just like FEFP, there's all these statistics and formulas and things that go into them, so...
So our county doesn't necessarily say, hey, DOE, this is what we want?
We want this much money, yes, sir.
They, they tell us, they, they put that onto us. And then, and then we go to work to say, do we meet the criteria in order to utilize those monies? Because we can't just, it's not a blank check either.
Correct. We have to give them specific plans on how we plan on using it. And then they, you know, ask questions, and we answer them, and then they tell us, you know, yes, you can do it, or no, you cannot.
And the ARP funds, I think that's where a lot of people have misunderstood. In Citrus County, we still had, and it looks here, it actually was higher than I remembered, but it's, you know, over six, 8.5 million, it's $8.6 million. It looks like we have still, is that, no, that's encumbered.
That's our encumbered.
I'm sorry. We have, we have about 1.8 million still, and we have, I think, until approximately 2023 is the maximum amount.
Yes, sir. And most of that is, if you look, a million dollars of ARP funding that WTC has already received. And they are, they have plans to do some remodeling in some of their vocational classrooms and wings over there to improve their, you know, their offerings out there, which is the plan of the ARP funds, is to get people out there working. So, so yes, we do have about that much left.
Okay, thank you.
So are there any other questions on the ESR funds? We have spent about, of the ESR two, we have spent about 42% of that as of right now, which the non-enrollment, the academic and the technology, all those just got approved last month by the state. So most of the spending we've done was the ESR lump sum. And then the only one that has available funds would be the non-enrollment, and that's because we're extending that over a two-year period to try and locate those students that are, for a better, lack of a better word, missing from our... So hopefully next month, I can come to you with the operational audit and possibly the internal accounts audit, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right.
I would say too, Miss, as you talked about the missing children, I think our, our district has been exemplary around the state for the number of missing children relocated right away.
Yes, we have been. Thank you.
About four minutes, we have a couple hearings, and it shall be ready.
No. Nobody, not.
He'll be there in four minutes. Boy, isn't he anxious?
5:15.
Good afternoon. I'm Christian Mallory. I teach at a personal school, and I like to inform the community right today. I come to you today to recognize what I feel is a lack of communication that needs to be clarified. For the eight years that I've been in the classroom, the understanding that teachers have had throughout the county is that accountability is for educators rather than students. Teachers feel pressured to lower the bar, to accommodate what students are willing to do, rather than asking them to rise to standard. Students have largely lost any understanding of true due dates as teachers take work later and later, over to a point having to give low grades. Early progress monitoring reports, in which each low grade has been squeezed out of the code, while understandable for the purposes of data tracking, is sent out to us without any real context, adding to the sense that true student accountability is not desirable, but instead frowned upon. I know the Citrus County School District does not, in fact, discourage student accountability, I want to make that clear. I know because I've stuck to my due dates. I've asked my students to reach a higher standard rather than meeting with them where they are when they start the year, and I've not once been able. I have to say, I did this on faith. I did this out of belief that our school system does actually have my back, because faith was all it was. I can't remember a time that I was ever given a reason to believe that student accountability was an important factor in education in Citrus County. I can't recall a single time where I was explaining that progress monitoring tools are not meant to micromanage a student's great work. This lack of communication is not unique to my school. I want to make clear that Melissa Behr and her admin team are amazing at what they do for both staff and students in personal schools. This project probably is dishbought and is leading to disillusioned educators and kids who go without the challenge needed to meet their full potential. I thank you, Superintendent Emma, for proving that my faith in our students was not, our system, excuse me, was not misplaced. And I hope that steps can be taken in the future to justify that faith in our students is justified in faith in others in this country. Thank you very much, please.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, all members.
Good afternoon.
This evening, we have two final hearings for policies, the student code of conduct and the district board plan. First item is to approve and adopt the update to policy 3.14 for suicide prevention. Defect revision, recommendations are based on new law statutes for new health instruction, and applicable citations have also been added. Policy performance committee review policy 3.14 on February 18th. It's presented to you here at your office workshop.
Anybody in the audience that the public want to, want to, um, policy 3.14, suicide prevention? Anyone wishing to address policy 3.14, suicide prevention? Anyone who wishes to address policy 3.14, suicide prevention? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
I approve, I move that we approve the update to policy 3.14, suicide prevention.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Kenny, second. I'm just counting for 3.14, suicide prevention. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Harry Spies here again. Can we today start really like the, the clarification that we're only responsible at bus stop when the bus is actually there? Because we have jurisdiction over those bus stops for other policies. But with the suicide policy, we can't be responsible unless the bus is there. I like that addition.
The next policy for your consideration is to approve and adopt a new policy for a moment of silence, 3.62. This is pursuant to House Bill 529. The moment of silence is currently being observed as required, and it was reviewed by the Policy Performance Committee in August and presented to you at the workshop in August.
I make a motion that we approve policy 3.62, a moment of silence?
Second.
It's been moved by this count, second by Mr. Kenny, to approve policy 3.62, a moment of silence. Any one in the audience like to address them? Any one in the audience like to address policy 3.62? Any one in the audience like to address policy 3.62? Seeing now, can we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Harry Spies here again. I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson?
This one also handed.
Oh.
Good afternoon. The, what we would like approval on today are the proposed amended changes for the Code of Student Conduct. We had gone over these, I don't recall which meeting it was, but what the changes were going to be. I'm not sure if you've had an opportunity to look at how it's been put in, how it will be changed in the Code of Student Conduct, if you have any questions or if there's anything I need to point out.
Now, thank you for the breakaway of, you know, the comparison. That, that was very helpful.
There are a couple of changes that were based on changes from the state in statute, and then also the definitions for a couple of the Cesser codes, or why those were put in here in addition to the items that we had discussed at another board workshop.
It's good to hear that, because these are the upfront state changes. The state says we have to, our policy, we have to have with our policy. And some people wonder why, some of the structure is consistent with the state, with the government.
Yes, ma'am. And a lot of times, our code is finished for the current school year before we receive the updates from the Department of Education on, on items such as Cesser codes, which is why we, we do them now.
Yeah, why did we change the, and I'm sure there's a reason, but we say on, on the page 13, the, any serious substantive threat or very serious substantive threat?
Well, the way that it, it is currently written in the Code of Conduct is that any violation will result in the most serious of disciplinary consequences. And where we changed it and replaced that wording that aligns more with what is actually in the threat assessment, which identifies the degree of the threat that's being made. So the ones that are the serious substantive threat or very serious substantive threat are the ones that will result in the most serious of consequences. The other one is no threat at all, or it's transient.
And I, I have a reason this started. And the threats are mentioned in our Code of Conduct in several different places, so they go from the zero tolerance, and, and I'd like to rework those pages so that the threats look exactly like the alcohol and the firearms. But when threats are mentioned as inappropriate behavior, this zero tolerance threat had to have stronger language, so that's, that's what Mrs. Bradshaw was trying to do.
What page, is that on?
Um, it's on page 13 for the zero tolerance. But then if you look under inappropriate behavior, um, two other places, on page 21, it's also making false accusations and things like that. So that, that kind of needs to be clarified, threatened, because threats now are different. And so we need to start, we can't just use the word threat at three or four different places in the Code of Conduct without identifying it. And I think it needs a little bit more, a Google kind of issue. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, again, I'm sorry, this has got to be my, my head up. When I saw this again, so on page 20 of the Student Code of Conduct, it says, this is not a complete list, but we give an idea of some of the things which are considered serious. And it lists all these things. Should, so should that say, should that say very serious? Where's the differentiation between serious and very serious? Is that in the Code of Conduct here?
It's in our threat assessment.
Okay, so, yeah, that's, that was my first question when I started the whole thing, on how you differentiate between serious and very serious.
Oh, I thought that, and I, I thought that's what I said. It's in the threat assessment, or it defines the degrees of the threat.
Right, and that is listed as serious or very serious.
Correct.
And I think Ms. Count's makes a good point. I think what, while we've made improvements, I think this year might be the year we, we start defining some of that, is what I think between all of us and Mr. Dots and Ms. Count's is saying. Maybe we, we break those out and we start using that common threat assessment language in the Code of Conduct, so that there may be some consistency, you know, of what that is. I know some districts have had like levels of, that they've created within their district. But I think if we're consistent with using it with the threat assessment, then that probably will help keep everybody on the same page.
And I think too, some of the difference is the threat versus the threat and intimidation. Threat and intimidation is what's considered a Cesser code, where just a threat is not. And we do have serious substantive threats or very serious that don't necessarily always rise to the degree of the intimidation portion. And that's what makes it a little bit harder in the code to make every threat that's written in the code exactly the same way, because it's really not viewed the same way from what is in statute as a threat and what is defined in, in Cesser as a threat intimidation.
I think we could work on the language of the threat. The consequences, you know, choose the behavior, you choose the consequences. So the consequences for zero tolerance threats is going to be much more severe than the threat under inappropriate behaviors. And so I think the better we can do to describe those things, the more knowledge the students have of the consequence of what they're doing is, is going to make it a lot easier to process.
And Chief Vincent has been instrumental in the reworking of this, the portions that are on zero tolerance with weapons and threats and such. So Chief Vincent, I didn't know if there was anything else that you wanted to add based on the, the work that we've done on this and the conversations. Maybe I'm not clear, you know, as clear as you could be on that.
Now, with the, with the threat assessment process, what we've been seeing is, is a lot of this, from the, from the statements that were being made, or treating the same. So what we're trying to do is, is establish some differentiation between a transient threat, which means that a student or, or someone has made a threat, but after the investigation revealed that there was no, no means of carrying out the threat or anything like that, but the statement was the same as maybe a serious substantive or very serious substantive. So we wanted to be able to treat those differently. So that's why we were trying to work through like making the Code of Conduct section. So, that's why we were trying to work through like making the Code of Conduct say we don't want to impose the most severe discipline on a transient threat, which is where we were at before. So now, we should either apply a serious discipline to a serious substantial or a very serious substantial threat. That's what we're trying to fix on the front end of this.
In the mental health field, understand exactly what you're talking about, because it's how we do the job.
So number 20, though, I think, you know, we're talking about a law enforcement decision on a criminal matter. And so I think that it should not be a separate item, it should be under expulsion, because what we're trying to say is we can recommend to law enforcement that a student commits a criminal offense be allowed to participate in a civil citation or similar pre-arrest program as an alternative to expulsion or arrest. I don't want people to think that we're going to send them to team court and then we're not going to discipline them, they're not going to have to meet school discipline. So, I'm just curious, as far as when we talk about diversion, we're talking about these, these are types of disciplinary interventions. So, I'm just kind of curious why we would put that, I mean, out in a standalone above expulsion, and really it's not meant to be above. I mean, what we've gone to is what's, how we've gone into a, into a work, serious strike. And expulsion's the last thing that we as a district can do. I don't want to misconstrue the fact that we're now going to ask law enforcement not to take criminal action because we want them to go to team, you know?
Well, yeah, so that's a legislative change, though. As far as like DJJ and all of that and what they're pushing as far as keeping kids out of juvenile justice system for petty acts of misconduct.
Yeah, but that's still going to be the decision made by the law enforcement agency. That's the way, I mean, you know, we're not putting them in, I mean, we don't have our own diversionary program.
No, you're correct.
If we had our own diversionary program like Broward County does, which is failure, you know, then we could, you know, then we could take action. So, what I'm saying is we can recommend it, doesn't mean it's going to happen. So I, you know, it just seems kind of like, what we're trying to say is, in the case of an expulsion, if your conduct meets the level of expulsion, there could be, as an alternative to expulsion, that a student may be allowed to participate in a pre-diversion program, right?
As an alternative.
As an alternative to expulsion. I mean, I don't think, you know, I guess what I'm trying to say is we can't, we can't say this is what's going to happen to you. In all these other cases, we can say, we can restrict you from activities, you know, and we already have, number 15 is already in there. 15 is already in there, there's civil citations. So, I was just kind of curious about how we're putting that as a separate item above expulsion.
Yeah. Without, you know, being prepared with having the legislation, the stuff that came through this year as far as what we should have in place for, when I noticed I wasn't thinking about threat assessments, it was adding those petty acts of misconduct. That's what this was trying to address, because it says that we should have those things in place if a student commits a criminal act, even though it's classified as a criminal act, there should be an alternative.
There should be alternative, right.
Right? Like you said, we don't have a diversion program. That's the department of juvenile justice that needs to have those things in place.
Could we put it under number 15, would it fall in line under civil citations?
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
In the Code of Conduct?
Here's, I have an extra one.
It's on page 19. I mean, we can even call it civil citations and diversion or something like that. I mean, I know we're required to have that available.
It's all disciplinary interventions.
And see number 15 as civil citations? Wouldn't that, isn't that what we, as an alternative to?
But, I think what we're trying to say is, is there could be other, in the future, other programs other than civil citation as a diversion program.
Right.
So if we just limited it to civil citation and we're saying, well, that's the only diversion, which that might be true today, that might be the only diversion program that's out there, but we are limiting ourselves to like saying, hey, if next year there's a different diversion program, that we can't participate in that as well.
Are there any other pre-arrest diversion programs right now in Central County that you know of besides team court? I mean, there's drug court, but I'm not sure three of them.
That's a collection, right?
Does Camp, that's private. I didn't know if that was one that was considered a diversion.
Well, I would rather than just add in number 19 as part of expulsion, that's where, that's what we're trying to say, is as an alternative to expulsion, we're allowed to go through a diversion.
I guess. The only thing is, this is a public hearing at this point, we can't make changes, we would have to go back through the rulemaking process.
All right.
So we can approve it and we can still go and do that, but we just, I just want to make sure that we remind us today.
But I think the other thing too is that we're really, and I said before, the threat is mentioned multiple times as inappropriate, but I was concerned about the threat in the false report, first of all, being in the same sentence. And I wanted to clarify, what's the consequence under zero tolerance for a threat? What's the consequence for false report under zero tolerance? I wasn't really concerned about the inappropriate behavior of the version. I want, I want a definition for the threat in the false report that's listed under zero tolerance. And that's statute.
Right.
It's in, and it needs to look like we do with controlled substances, alcohol, and it needs to look like, it needs to be in the same format.
If we're going to make any changes today, then like Mr. Kennedy said, we need to approve this and then go back to the process again.
This is just the first of one of the changes. There's more to come.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I also like on below the diversion, it talks about a school-based intervention program, right? Is that, do we have that right now, kid, a school-based intervention? I mean, we're, again, this is what parents are going to read, this is kind of our rules for everybody, so I don't want to confuse people on.
And I don't disagree, but this language is one that we've reviewed in workshops and so forth, getting to this point, and it's actually not much different than it's been for the last number of years. Now, I would agree, we do, and Ms. Counds has been kind of harping on this in a good way.
I like harping.
For quite a while. I think that it is a very appropriate time with the threat assessment tool that we have to go and do a full realignment of some of these in the code. But I don't, I think it is a, it is really part of that whole code to make, the whole student code, you know, development process.
It is. And these were just amendments that were made based on.
And that's why I just want to not get us too far off track to say, I don't disagree with anything either one of you are saying, but I think that, that there's been our opportunity to do that. Now we're changing to do some cleanup on an amendment for this one. It doesn't substantively change, I think, what is available to us, but I think we want to be better articulate with, with the tool that we provide our parents.
Did you want to say something?
No.
And we've got the Code of Conduct Committee and it might take, it'll take several times of revision to get maybe a rewrite this straight, because I think Mr. Bradshaw even said he'd like to rewrite the whole thing. So, I think we just need to take, you know, I used to tell the kids if they had a big problem, how do you eat an elephant? One bit at a bit at a time, and he was just one bit.
Clear up zero tolerance. Mr. Dixon, then, did you want for us to pass this as it's written?
Yes, I think so. I think that's what we're talking about, is go ahead and pass this and go back.
And come back. Okay. And do, and it's for the public also to decide at three times and stretch. Okay. Was that the?
No, I have another question. So, the issue that we were going to change, Mr. Dixon, with athletic ages, that was wrong. And Mr. Bradshaw said that was going to be, that was going to be changed. Is that, have we, we haven't done that, have we?
The Student Code of Conduct?
Yes.
We changed.
We changed it? Okay, so we already did, but we didn't do a public hearing on that, did we?
I believe we did.
No, we did.
Because it was right at the same time.
I thought it was going to be this, as well. I thought he said the next.
No, we did it and we were able to get it in time where it's in the printed version.
That's right.
Of the, it should be in the 21, 22 printed version. We.
Is it in that, that's that? Well, again, I would rather, rather than approving something that I don't feel comfortable with, I would rather go back and have it fixed where it's right. I mean, I don't, I don't see this, I see if anything, it fits in with the civil citation program, and I don't see us having a, our own pre-arrest diversion program. I mean, because when, if we vote to pass this, it's going to become part of the Student Code of Conduct, right? I mean, it's going to be an approved edition of Student Code of Conduct.
And at this point, and that's what I just was, as I was saying, we, just reminding us, we, because we workshop this already, at this point, we have to either not approve it, or we, and then have to send it back and there's no changes, none of the changes that are accepted.
All right. But, Mr. Kenny, when, this is the first time I've read this wording, I mean, we may have talked about it, but have, have you given us this wording before?
It was in our, it was in the backup of our agenda.
Oh, I know, but, but you said in a prior workshop. This is the first time.
Mr. Bradshaw has kind of said it at the last, when he was last presenting, he just gave us the sentence, but we didn't have it in writing, but he said it in the meeting. And this is, this is dealing with zero tolerance threats.
Right.
Not, not something that we're going to have any interventions for. It's going to be zero tolerance, same way we treat drugs, alcohol, firearms and things like that. So, it's not like we're going to offer them anything beyond what the statute requires us to do for zero tolerance.
And I agree, and I think that there's, we're cleaning up, even with the definitions on these other things, the first, then second things, these are, these are cleanups, but what I did not care for is the wording for zero tolerance for the diversion program and then for the disciplinary intervention where it doesn't even say where it's going to go under. What is that going to go under? It just says page 20. And is that the first paragraph?
Well.
And page 20?
First paragraph of page 20 is expulsion.
And believe it goes under the numbers, it's now, after 19.
The numbers, there's 19 is at the top. And then it would go under number 19 on page 20, before you get to definitions of acts for disciplinary intervention.
Chief Benson, did you have something you wanted to add there?
Yeah. I was just trying to review Senate Bill 590, I'm looking at the language, you know, and when we look at that number 20 from the diversion, I see where you're going with that, but we put that under just the types of, you know, that define all the different things like civil citation or details, all of those things.
Just giving a list of them.
As the school-based intervention programs?
Types of disciplinary interventions that like, it's on that top line there, it's underlined. Every type of disciplinary intervention is listed, starting on page 17, one through, and it goes all the way up to 19, and we were adding the 20 in there, just as a list of.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was just going to say. This really just adds to the list of the other 19 items of disciplinary intervention. So, in essence, what we would just be saying is we're not, we would not have a diversionary as one of those options if we were not to approve this. At this point, it would not be an additional option, but we would also not be able to do any other cleanups at this time.
So where does that next statement go then? After the diversion, number 20 diversion, and then it goes to the next one, definition of acts?
Definition of acts, so on page 20 in the code.
Okay.
It's bolded, so definitions of acts for disciplinary intervention, and it had at the following after the first paragraph, so.
So under that one, second paragraph?
Under the bold section, a student commits a petty act of misconduct may be assigned to a school-based intervention program.
And the school-based intervention programs are ISS?
Renaissance.
Well, the school-based one, the, would, what would those be? I mean, we're talking about PACE, Renaissance? I thought we said we're talking about things like suspension, all these different things on here, no? I mean, if someone asks me, what are, what are our school-based intervention programs? It's not a diversionary program, right? It's a school-based intervention, so what are they?
The schools can create plans for interventions on behavior, whether it's like the damaged property or something like that, you know, a petty act, behavior plans, a lot of students before they're placed at an alternative setting, we have behavior plans that are in place for them.
So if you look at our policy, most petty acts and misconducts are criminal, like the criminal mischief, assault, battery, all of those things, and it's really a business that we're part of this, which is what we have to find in our policies and that's all there is. So some of those things, that's due, it's, even though it might not be punished criminal for that, but that, and you're still, you know, candidates to do Renaissance and that and that, so those are ones that I, as far as school-based intervention, these are the things that, or that maybe is a problem, that's not necessarily a problem.
And just for clarification, that's not even in the same section of the diversion program?
No, it's not.
So, I, that's what I just want to make sure.
And the school-based, I mean, like I said, a school can do it, but school-based intervention is also a program like Renaissance or PACE, it's a school-based intervention. They're not going outside into another program, so to speak, that is DJJ, you know, and they talk about that, where it may not be entered into the Department of Juvenile Justice Information System Prevention Web. So, they're getting the intervention for a juvenile act, but they're not going into the DJJ system.
Yeah, and I think, well, I know the purpose of the prevention web is to make sure if the kids do a diversion program and school district, if they're running a diversion program in court, that there's a tracking so that people know how many diversions they've been involved with, right? And this is one of those times I know that Mr. Bradshaw couldn't be with us today, but I sure wish he were, he would be here so that we could kind of, I just can't quite grasp my hands around all this. I understand if you board wants to do one, that's fine, I'm not, I'm going to go to number one, like it's, it's up to the board on how you want us to do it.
So here's the question, is rather, is, is there anything in here that is imperative that we could not re-advertise for 30 days and redress this at our November meeting? That we need between now and November, that this would change?
Down to now and November to rewrite something you said?
Yeah, I'm saying if we instead voted to table this till the next regular, or, let me say, to bring this back at the next November meeting, we'd have to re-advertise, but that would potentially give us enough time to do that.
If you're looking to rewrite.
Right.
So you're.
Because I, because I do believe that you bring up excellent points, Mr. Dodd, and I'd hate to just say, let's just vote this down. Instead, can we just bring this back?
But then I wonder too.
Or do we must vote it down?
If we think we're going to solve everything that we're discussing right now by the November meeting, it probably is not going to happen, because we're going to change this, it has to be noticed again, and there's going to be, I'm anticipating changes to the Code of Conduct at multiple meetings during the year. So I don't think we can solve all the problems with the written booklet right now.
I think the Code of Conduct process that we're, is what you're talking about, would not change with this. This is just a cleanup of the current code.
Yeah.
So what Mr. Dodd, I think, his concern is, is just not, not adopting something that he just, you know, is not ready to do today. And I'm saying, I think that there's some valid points. I would be comfortable moving forward with it myself, because I think I, I see where we are, but I also, you know, don't want to necessarily say that a voice gets, you know, muted, let's, instead, can we just bring this back? Now, what I don't know is whether we have to vote it down.
Well, and I, of course, don't know the rules. I will say that Chief Vincent, I, we went over all of this with Mr. Bradshaw, but I know with him being here, it's a lot more explainable when he puts it in those terms. The only couple of items that I, that do concern me are the. The only couple of items that I, that do concern me are the definitions of acts for disciplinary intervention. The aggravated battery changed from intentional, knowingly causes great bodily harm to knowingly causes more serious injury, such as. This was a change for CESSR. There were a couple, there was that one. The other major that's on the, the second page that you received, where we added, this includes any drug or weapon found unattended and not linked to any individual. That is something that it would not be linked to an individual, but it has to be reported in CESSR. You know, if a gun or some, or drugs were found somewhere that it was unknown who they belonged to. And then the very last one, 29 threats and intimidation.
But we're doing those anyway right now, because they're, they're now in statute.
I would give the weapon.
These are brand new, that are not in the code. Like, in our code right now, it says brandishing a weapon.
But they are, they are in statute, so we would have to follow those now anyway.
We would.
So I'm saying, so that probably doesn't change, it's just.
It's just that it would not be in writing if someone were to refer to this. If there were something with an expulsion, that you didn't have that correctly in writing. That's my, would be my only concern.
So we would then be able to provide that in statute to them, if that was asked?
We can provide these approved amendments today.
If we approve them. I don't think we have a motion on this yet.
No, we do not, we were waiting for a direction to be.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed amended changes to the 2021, 2022 code of conduct.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Council, several by Mrs. Bryant to approve the 2021, 2022 amended code of conduct. All in favor? Oh, I didn't, sorry. Let's say to the audience, I think that part, yeah. Anyone in the audience want to speak? Anyone want to speak to this? Third in one time, anyone in the audience wish to speak about the code of conduct?
One, before you call the vote, I, I would just say that I'm going to vote for this, but I would like to see us have this reviewed, and if we need to make an adjustment, make it back in November for corrections on this. I do think that, that the information that I was aware of, that we were making, is what's here, but I completely appreciate Mr. Dodd's concerns.
I'll put the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Those?
Nay.
Carrie's three to one. Four to one, excuse me, Kenny?
Thank you.
Four to one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finalizing on your public hearing list for this evening is the adoption of the five-year work plan for the district. And as you know, this is supposed to be adopted with the budget, but it was delayed because it came out late from Tallahassee. And Ms. Wilson made a lot of efforts to bring it up to speed. And I've answered a few questions, but I'll be glad to answer any more if you want to go ahead. Open it up, okay, have questions now, if you want to go ahead and open it up.
Is that, yes, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to address the five-year work plan? Anyone in the audience wish to address the five-year work plan? Um, anyone in the audience wish to address the five-year work plan? Okay, a board?
I'd just like to see Mr. Dodd at full sitting. Waiting.
I'm a ribbon.
Just getting a year closer.
I know.
Yeah. And this is probably a Chief Benson question again, but I noticed at Citrus High School, we, we have the safety problem with it. Is there a reason we have to put off Citrus High School and their work until, what is it? 2024, 2025? I know we were dealing with permits and engineers and things like that, but is that?
City has to be done as part of the master plan, and so there's a lot to that. It's just a part of that larger picture. And so it's not vibrating to be broken out as, but it's not a critical project. It has to be done on a way, it's more than, it's.
Thank you, sir.
Just talking about the.
The chain into the front office and the children having to walk to the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, once again, we're in some of the concepts of master planning phase right now, that this is for the architect. Because it's so far off, we don't have costing associated with that right now. Our test work on costing, we don't know the funding source quite yet, so we put it in the plan in the off years, but certainly if we were to prioritize sooner than that, we can make that happen.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
And I'll make a comment about Everest Middle School. I see that we do have that in the, this first year work plan, to get that traffic situation under control at Everest Middle School. And so, but if I remember properly, you told me that that is not impact fee fundable?
Part of it is not, part of it is not, I missed it.
Okay, and so with that, in the first year of the work plan, so we're going to be starting, can you go over that as far as the plan? Because we have had an ongoing issue there with pickup, and the city's been very patient, working with us with that, with, you know, parent pickup. And I know there's, you know, some movement there that we kind of fix that, but can you kind of talk to us a little bit about that?
Yes, I mean, this, this project's been moving for a while.
Forever.
We've tried a lot of different options to get it resolved. There are some issues with acquiring the property there, that we did look at originally at Hill Railroad, by the way, that connects with that other unnamed street.
Right.
And there's a high dis between the two flats that the city didn't really want to deal with, so we chose another option, so we're looking at purchasing the property there on the other end of the facility, re-aligning the road, and maybe put in some additional parking to get parents off from, you know, parent pickup.
And, and that could eventually leave away from a pickup down Ella Street, could, is that?
We got that other project going on too, with the US 41 project. That will resolve, probably some of our traffic issues can help facilitate, because it'll have an XL D cell lane, so cars won't back up as much. And people may not use that area now because cars back up. So we may free up some space over on the Ella side by the US 41 project being completed by DOT. But we are looking at it in a holistic way, and hopefully this could help solve some of that.
Well, I know you, at one time, you know, we had hopes that we'd get a traffic light there at Middle School Road, and then they're going to have to move the road, and then, I think you came back and said, no, they weren't going to do that. But where, where are we now with a traffic signal?
Well, the traffic signal has to be warranted. And would that mean, and it has to be perfectly a quarter mile from the other traffic signal. So where they're putting the intersection might never be optimal for a traffic light. They're saying that it's not going to be.
So even if we moved that road to coincide with the other road cross at 41, you're still saying that they're not going to be able to put a traffic signal in there?
They're not, there's, it's too close to the existing traffic light at the shop. Less than a quarter mile away. Our original proposal was to move it up to Park Avenue, which is the inner street on the other side of the road.
Right.
And then pay for part of the traffic signal, but that was squashed by DOT. And they, and they designed this road project, they, they put in some XL D cell lanes, which they believe will solve a lot of the problem. Because right now, the problem stems from the fact that it's two lanes, and somebody wants to turn in. If they're coming from the north, it backs everything down for sure. So, once the project gets complete, from the DOT standpoint, that's going to solve a lot of our problems. That's just a long time away. You know, we own that road, school board owns Hill School Road and Junior Quarter Drive. So that's another kind of link one, is we actually own that road, so we're responsible for the safety. And that's where this project comes in, it's in the work plan, we got a realignment of Junior Quarter Drive. Eventually, we want to get it away from the school, so that when you back out, and there's parking spots, you don't back out into the road.
Right, and eventually, though, we've got to give some relief on Ella Street for where parents are waiting in line on the side of the right-of-way, Turnpike Road. And you've got kids crossing the street to get their parents, calling out on their cell phones, and going, going over there to get in a car, crossing traffic. And I, I know the principal's doing a lot to try to be out there, watch, watching that area, but that road that leads down, leads to the school is Ella, that's a city street, correct?
Yes, Ella is a city street.
And so, you know, there is issues with the city that we need to be working on. So I'm glad, I mean, I really am happy that we've kind of got this in the work plan for this first year. I just, you know, I.
But I want to caution the board if you don't mind. Right now, we are looking, we're in the land acquisition phase. We feel like we're moving in that right direction. So if we're in the land acquisition phase, what I don't want the board to think is that we're going to be out there pushing dirt and re-making roads this year, because that's not going to happen. Timing that is still not going to happen. By the time we get, go through the master planning process, come to the board, ask for money for the master plan, get the master plan, get the cost for the project associated with it, bring it back to the board, one or two or three different definitions for you guys to decide. Then we have to split it out to bid. We're not moving dirt right now. It's down the road. Right now, we are trying to secure the land and give us options. That's all we're trying to do. You know, right now, I know we do have, the city's concerned with what's going on down Ella. But we've been in communication with the city, that's more a traffic enforcement issue than a school issue. That is not incumbent upon us, we don't have the jurisdiction to off property, and to enforce, tell parents where they can park and camp for, we try to educate them. But that's an ongoing issue that hopefully, through the land acquisition, through master planning, through strategic planning, we'll be able to work, be a partner with the city to alleviate that issue that they have. But they do understand that that's a traffic enforcement issue. They understand what they can do to try to alleviate that in the immediate sense. But the long term, we definitely want to get that traffic off the road.
And Mr. Bishop, as, as Mr. Dixon said too, we, we still have the issue of the widening of 41 and the impacts of that, which could be significant towards any of those master planning phases. So, and I know it is frustrating trying to meet the needs there, but there's a lot of moving parts that I think that are going on right now.
Yes, sir.
And that's kind of, I think, why you've had it at the phase, and the number of years out right now is for that very reason.
Yes, sir.
I think we have to ask those people, but I think that some of my elementary schools are experiencing more parent pickup this year because of our bus schedules and things like that. And so I think we're seeing probably more cars at our schools doing the drop off and pickup than we have in the past. So we have to be a little bit more patient with that too.
Yes, sir.
Because I, it's, it's not just different at middle school, I've seen it at the other schools too, with the traffic effect.
But I'm glad to share with the board that our fill rate in terms of cover routes, we're doing very well.
Yes, yeah, we're doing, thank, thank God, lots of drivers there. Absolutely doing a wonderful job. Some of them doing two, two routes in the afternoon.
We're getting covered.
The kids. I'm going to approve the five-year work plan. Of citizens, all in favor?
That's it. Send, it's a move vote. Mrs. Bryant, second by Mrs. Council to approve the five-year work plan of citizens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, Carrie's not, you're a thank. And now, yes, and now we're closing the public part of the meeting and going back to our agenda, which is approve the minutes.
Move approve the minutes of August 24th, September 7th, and September 21st.
Second. It's been moved by, Mrs. Council, second by Mrs. Bryant to approve the minutes of August 24th, September 7th, and September 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
Those, Carrie's five to one, thank you. And any citizens, others, or more? Move on, anything else that needs to come before four? Anyone want to make a comment? And else you want to let me tell it?
I'm just looking forward to finish in October. I think our, our start to the school is a little bit rocky, like we're having across the state, but it seems to be settling down, and the kids and the teachers are doing what they need to be doing. And I think they're all looking forward, like, excuse me, we cough already, it's only October. Looking forward to the SACS meetings and the discussion of the calendar. And we'll see which one wins, but, yeah, it, it's starting to settle down. I'm glad kids, and I hope your kids are, are doing their best. Because you seem like you're a very concerned teacher, and I admire you for that.
No, and I, I want to just say, we got a message earlier today, that we had another zero day when it comes to our COVID dashboard. So thank you, Mr. Mullins, for making sure that we get those regularly. And lately, we've been pleased when, when they come in. I want to thank Florida School Board Association. Last week, Ms. Bryant and I were at the board of directors' training and meetings, and we spent a lot of time working on a response to the National School Board Association's letter, which was, let's just say, over the top. And it really, it brought us some heartburn and some concern, to say the least. I was grateful that both the FSBA board of, or FSBA executive board felt that the board of directors needed to weigh in and respond. And we released a response yesterday, I know a lot of you got those in your email. It's certainly created now a lot of news. I think there's been a lot of appreciation. Ms. Bryant, I want to thank you for your work on the board of directors and the collective voice that that letter provided. Just to assure this board, the Florida School Board Association has already withheld our dues beginning back in July, because we have continued to have concerns with some of the overreaching of discussion of federalizing things that the National School Board has been suggesting. And we believe that states and our local law enforcement, as well as our states, should be better prepared, or they, they can, they are best prepared to address the needs. We also wanted to reassure that we want public input. Not only does Florida have broad public input laws, but we encourage it, even when it doesn't agree with each of us. And whether that is our parents, or the public at large, Florida School Board Association wanted to make it clear, we encourage that, we desire that, that is the bedrock of our democracy, it's the bedrock of our constitution, and both of our state and our federal constitution. So with that, we have and will continue to withhold dues from the National School Board Association. And we may have to reevaluate very quickly whether we will continue to be a part of that, because it is truly something that we have concerns with, the transparency. And just for clarification, the Florida School Board Association directors, executive directors, board of directors, no one was consulted in any state, including ours, before they just issued out a statement that was overreaching and went excessively too far. So I wanted to share that with you. Now, good news. I was proud to, that Citrus County High Schools hosted its third SWI, regional-sized swim meet this last Saturday at the Citrus Memorial Health Foundation YMCA Aquatics Center. And I was honored to volunteer and be meat manager and scoring official. We had about 150 student athletes. We had approximately 200 coaches, volunteers, and spectators on top of that. Mr. Bishop, as always, I know you as a second hat, wear as our district athletic director. Our athletic directors are phenomenal. They each came, they didn't do it because of me, they did it for the kids. They each came and brought representation, they each were so supportive. But I'll tell you the most remarkable thing now, the Gulf Coast Eight Conference, which Mr. Bishop was a big part of bringing back together. This represents the three high schools in Citrus County, and the four, and the five high schools in that other county. In Hernando County. The, this, these eight, when it comes to, and I know Ms. Council won't be surprised, but these eight schools, when it comes to aquatics, I have watched all season. Mr. Dodd, it's phenomenal. They cheer for one another's team. They sit at the end of the lane lines, and they have cheered over and over and over for their competitor. I don't know where we see that, but it is remarkable.
We saw that.
We see that, that, we do see that. You know, swimming is a sport where a lot of them do swim together in other areas, and they are always cheering for each other, but that is reflected into the parents and the sportsmanship. So I want to just say I am impressed. The athletic directors are certainly modeling that behavior. The coaches are definitely modeling it. I don't think I've ever seen a time when there has been much more positive working together of coaches across not just two teams, three teams. together of coaches across not just two teams, three teams, but eight teams together. So I I was just, I'm, if you could tell, the evening with pride to have that on us. So, thank you.
All right. Yes, so it was a very sad day on September 28th when we lost one of our football players, Antonio Hicks, passed away at football practice at Citrus High School. Sixteen-year-old young man, I knew Antonio, he played basketball with my son at Citrus High, the JV team, and was a fine young man and a hard school out to his family. It's a very difficult time for our coaches, our players, our student body at Citrus High School, teachers that were there that teach at Citrus High. And I was able to go to the celebration, the service that they call the celebration of his life. He was at Cornerstone this last Saturday, and there was, church was full, and it was a very nice service, and I think it's appropriate that we pause for a moment of silence if if you don't have a problem with that, in the memory of of Antonio. I also want to point out that two of the football coaches, Coach Kelly Franklin and Coach RJ RJ Pollard Booth spoke at the funeral, and a very touching funeral. There were a lot of, a lot of speakers, a lot of people that came forward, and it was a great service. And I know they're going to be honoring Antonio as they continue to finish the season, the football season. There's some things in place to to honor his number, his time as an athlete at Citrus High School. The FHSAA sanctioned girls wrestling for individual hockey tournaments, so we're going to have girls wrestling, that wrestlers are going to be able to have state championships for girls wrestling.
All right, that's about time.
And we also need the minimum contest requirement.
Thank you very, very much for doing that.
For fall sports, you know, we're getting ready to start.
Both, I think, appreciates that right now.
The playoff season is is ahead for us now. I was down in Broward County for the Stoneman Douglas meeting, and it's, you know, when we look at the FSAT that we get in closed session and to see where we are, I'm very proud of this organization superintendent for, you know, moving the way we have. You know, I do, you know, I'll point out that we have a chance to make a recommendation, and I appreciate, you know, the board on that idea to make school safety an agenda item on all of our, on all of the school advisory councils. I think that's a great recommendation that we can put in that report, and we'll see how that goes.
Mr. Dodd, there's no reason why, though, we can't find a way to put that as a guideline or expectation in Citrus County, though locally, and that's something maybe we could bring back at some other opportunity.
Definitely. Thank you. Unity Day is next Wednesday, October 20th, and there's a unity walk at Citrus High School. It's actually going to start at Cornerstone, that just goes around the block, downstate of the road, Citrus High, and back to Cornerstone, but a lot of, three of the four middle schools are involved with it this year. You know, it's very orange for for unity, so Wednesday 20th is Unity Day, and I'm glad that we continue to promote that also. The Royal Acts of Kindness is going to present, it's four o'clock, four o'clock on Wednesday, October 20th, at maybe at Cornerstone, at that church for the walk. Pink tie, breast cancer wear this month, October. And what I still have is, you know, we had some story written and some opinions about athletic trainers, and I think it would be a good thing for us to have a discussion on that at some point, talk to superintendent, and I think that is in the works to have a workshop on that item sometime, you know, sometime in the near future, that we can discuss the opportunities to hire athletic trainers and look at what we need from the district is, you know, I know this board won't shy away from having that discussion. I wasn't here in 2008, I guess, when they had it last time, but it certainly is worth the discussion, I think. That's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Kennedy and I were at the board of directors meeting, and a lot of good things done. And tomorrow, Mr. Ballmer's already left, is our visit meeting, and hopefully I'll be done for a while. Every meeting's, anyway, Ray, thank you.
Such a great job, the group meetings. I know, Mr. Kennedy and I were in a meeting a couple weeks ago with FSBA, and some of the things that we talked about were to have to, again, work together, do the job together. Now, some people maybe were out of the left field, but Mr. Kennedy and I were not. We felt very much that we wanted to support and be a part of the educational system in a very positive way. And we worked with the people in our camp, who are very focused on the fact that the best decisions are made by people who are in the county, who must live by the decisions, rather than someone, a few shades away, that they don't have to do a decision, they just go, yes or no. But our county does, and we're very proud of the parents who get involved in the school system, the SAC committees, who are are focused on giving the best that they can for their children and making things work better, right? Proud of the teachers, the students, of course, themselves, who who focus on doing the best they can do. In the program over here with Mr. Bidner, where we have the IB program, those are students focused on doing the best they can do at the top of the line, they're working toward up here, not down here. I'm very proud of those students in all of the different programs who work to do the best they can. And it's, at the end of the year, it's shown because there's so much money given to these students, the scholarships, and so many accolades given to them. I guess we're just plain proud of this camp and how we've worked together to get the job done. And that's all I have, and it's, if you want to be honest, want to say we're, we we.